And then, of course, the soft skills. And those are the critical ones again. Because if a student won't show up to work or an employer won't show up to work, what good are they to that employer? So we have to emphasize being on time. Being on time to school, being on time to work. Turning the work in and doing the work and doing it well, doing your best work. And not taking a low grade because it's passing, but doing the best you can do going above and beyond. Those are the things. And the commitment to that work or to that job. While our students are students, that is their job. And that's one of the things we need to emphasize at Garden City High School. Our next steps, as I said, we're going to disseminate the information, give that information back to our teachers. Our committee's going to look at that. We want another event, but it won't be the same thing. So I talked to some students, some teachers today in our in-service, and we talked about what is that next event going to look like. It will be called Building Bridges, but maybe it'll focus on the technology and the skills that are being taught in our pathways. But we'll see. We'll talk to the teachers, we'll talk to the employers and see what are the next steps. But we want to take the information we have now and move forward. And continually support and focus on partnerships. Because truly, when everybody's working with students, I think that's going to be the best thing. We'll have mentors possibly. We'll have a place where they can actually see mathematics or communication skills put to work in the workplace. And then getting our young adults to stay or return to Garden City and raise a family and be, you know, good citizens here. So that's basically it in a nutshell. I think it was a great evening, but I have to say this one more thing. It is about partnerships. And this couldn't have happened without the committee, the Finney County Workforce Connection Committee. Everybody helps, everybody's got another job or two. And so, but everyone combined and made this happen. And it was, it was a great event. And it was good for our school. Any questions?
This Friday, you guys are traveling to the hotel?
Yes, we are. May 8th. That is this Friday, isn't it?
Yeah, just our high school is in another area.
The students in Southwest Kansas were invited, and I have to give Dr. Aetha credit and thank you because our bus requests are due January 20th. And so I sent this in a few weeks ago and asked if we could have a bus. And, you know, thanks to him, he said, yes, please make this happen. So we have a bus, we'll have to make a couple of trips, but we'll get them over there at 1 o'clock to see the Ascend Hotel, which again, there's a partnership. Cecil O'Brady and Bob Kreitzer again, and other contractors and subcontractors. And Sammy are stopping for the afternoon. So our students and Southwest Kansas students, area Kansas students can come in and take a look at the progress of that hotel. You know, whether they're HVAC or they're electrical engineers, mechanical, they're the construction crew, whatever, our students are going to learn about the phases that have taken place and what's going to happen next. So it'll be a great, you know, just a great field trip for those students to see that in action.
It sounds like I've made this, there's a lot of amazing opportunities that are going to happen for us.
I think so.
I think it's going to be great for, for everybody, the community and the students. It'd be great, are you getting feedback from, from the events?
Oh, yes, very good feedback.
Good, good.
And, and a lot of people ask, well, where were all the students? And that'll probably be the next step. We'd like to have more students there. This was though, a beginning. And it was for employers to discuss from different, different industries and business, but also to discuss with a few teachers there as well. We wanted to get that information started and that dialogue started. And so hopefully the next steps will include many students and more teachers.
And we need to encourage teachers to come out of this group.
Yes.
Do what you can on that front.
I know we do.
If I may, I was there, unfortunately. But it was a great event. Seeing the college people working with the high school kids during doing the culinary arts and how professional they were being when they were handing the food over and explaining what it was. It was great. And hearing the statements from Mr. Kreitzer, that was great. I don't know, there may have been some police brutality in my little pod there because I was the only lawyer, but all, I mean, the police department had like a table and a half. But it was really good hearing what everyone had to say. And we're all on the same page. Everything that was put up there, you know, the soft skills, having kids know that they have to show up on time and be prepared to work when they show up and all that kind of thing. That was resonating throughout the entire room, no matter who it was that was talking. So I really enjoyed it. Thank you for doing that, all of your hard work on it. It was a great event.
Any other questions? Good, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The original plan was for this to be a evening more focused on iPads, but when building bridges happened, we felt like that should be the focus of tonight on iPads. And, but Deb Jarmer, we gave her a time limit and we said five minutes, knowing it would take 10, but I told her I was going to tackle her at 7:00. So she did super today. She got three times. But one thing she didn't mention a little bit about that also came out of building bridges is the importance of technology in the workforce. And so that is a perfect segue into the iPad training because even Mr. Kreitzer that night mentioned that along with soft skills, one of the greatest changes he's seen professionally is in the area of technology. And it doesn't matter if you're in the medical field, the trades field, the police force, it doesn't matter. Technology is a huge part of that. And so when he said that, that always reaffirms to me that we made a very good decision in bringing the iPads and all the technology that we had in that new building. And we do put it to good use. I'm just going to cover a few things on the iPads. One is we offered seniors to buy them, 100 of them for sale. The waiting list exceeded 100. So they had to be in good standing in terms of with their iPads. If they had broken devices or owed insurance fees, they were, someone else got that spot on their list. But all 100 are accounted for. Thefts are down this year and we feel like we just have a better, the system that we approved last year in terms of tracking the device paid off. Even if a student wipes his or her device and tries to sell it, the minute someone plugs it in, it pops up that this is a USB port or some device. That was, that was worth the change. Another factor is, and this was the most telling to me this year, is we just had a teacher turn in her resignation a couple of weeks ago and she and I were having a conversation. And she said, when I started on this job, I had no experience with the iPad. She was an experienced teacher that moved in. And she said, and I was terrified. But now I'm terrified to move to a district that doesn't have it. I don't even know what I'm going to do without it. So, and that was in a one-year span. She has become that comfortable and that, that device has been such a part of her instruction. So we don't have a lot to share with you for me to give you information tonight. We wanted the focus to be on building bridges, but I would be glad to answer any questions that you've had. You've heard so much over the last three years.
Nope.
Technology marches on, time marches on. What's the next iPad going to be? Is it going to be an iPad?
Yes, the iPad 2 is being phased out. They just aren't producing them anymore. So next year's freshman class will get the iPad Air. The iPad Air. It should run the same apps, but it may, does it have a different plug-in cord? So that could be an issue. That's going to be the big issue, honestly. A lot of the, the ways to charge it and such. But that will be our, our next movement as to the Air. It's the same, pretty much comparable price.
Significantly lighter.
Significantly lighter.
Why the 100 iPad limit? And is that what we did last year?
Last year, I don't remember if we offered 100, but the, go ahead. I think the limit has something to do with the lease, but all that.
Last year we allowed students to buy who wished to buy them. This year we set the amount at 100 because the tech, knowledge steering committee bet. And one of the things that came out, that that group's got a lot of passion for is we want iPads in lower grades. And the only way to do that is to move those iPads down because we have no dollars to purchase them. So we set it at 100 to make, to allow the first 100 students who are in good standing purchase their iPads. We will then take those dollars and buy iPad carts and fill them with the remaining iPads and give them out to elementary schools. So we're going to start moving these iPads down to lower grades.
So will that be our plan for the next few years? Do our iPad?
Evolate sound.
At this time, yes. It has not been finalized, but that would be our, our hope is that we'll, we'll start moving them down. They are four years old and they are starting to show some wear and tear, but if those kids have taken really good care of them, they're in great shape. We anticipate for elementary age, they could continue to run the, the apps that we need them to run.
Did they have, was it a drawing? I mean, as, so 100, one person?
We made the announcement and said, get in and sign up. So they all signed up, more than 100 could sign up, it was in that order. And then we went through number one, good standing, yep, stays at number one. Number two, nope, has to drop.
Good question. Any other questions? Is that all for your presentation? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Unfinished business, empowering writers. Jan, looks like she can handle here if there are any follow-up questions from her presentation last, the last meeting. Dr. Dennis, too?
We are asking you to approve Empowering Writers, this is a series to see.
This is an expansion of the existing pilot department, District White. There's no discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the extension of the pilot program. So no questions? So can I, Tim? Any further discussion? All those in favor, signature bar is in the key. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for having me. All right, moving on to new business. Proposal to refinance the bonds for the new high school and early childhood center resulting in savings to taxpayers over the next five years. KJ, on.
John Haas couldn't be here tonight, so you're stuck with me. I'll do my best to be as eloquent as he is when he talks about bond refinancing. This is something that we actually look at every year. Piper Jeffrey issued the bonds for us, usually comes to us with proposals and simply rate finances, what you could save. As with one of the bond market, anytime those interest rates are changing, time changes, all the factors that are involved in that, it's kind of a yes and a no. We've held out for a while. And the proposal that they brought to us, one of the proposals that they brought to us this year, seems like it's starting, it's really starting to make sense, but we should make a move and start refinancing just a portion of these bonds. We've been working, the scenarios that we went through, John Haas, he's the district's financial advisor, he's out of Wichita, he helped us before I got here. And we worked with Piper Jeffrey to give us the scenarios, one of which that I am getting ready to show you. Let's see, we reviewed several scenarios, one of the ones that seemed to make the most sense at this point in time, given everything that we've got going on in the district, our financial constraints, this was one that seemed pretty appealing to us at this point in time. Sorry, I didn't. Basically, the way this scenario works is that we would see the most significant savings over the next five years. We would be refinancing less than 10 million of our bonds. It's about 9.1, if I remember correctly, that would still be determined which bonds will be refinanced as they go through their review. But we'd see an average of about 100, 150,000 over the next five years and then minimal savings after that. The pretty total down at the bottom is 735,000. If you add to it some cost savings, our net present value is about 740,000 dollars, which is savings that we can see by doing a potential refinancing. Granted, these numbers were as of April 28th, so last week. They could have changed up or down at this point in time, who knows? Because we cannot market the day we find out numbers, basically what we're looking at, asking from you tonight is that you consider a resolution that would allow Piper Jeffrey, would allow our financial advisor to start the process of seeing if this is something that we want to do. And we've given them a limitation that says, we would like to move forward if we can see savings of at least 600,000 dollars. If we cannot see savings of 600,000 dollars, at this time, we are not interested in automatically moving forward. They can bring another presentation to us if they would like, but it would not be an automatic, you have the authority to go ahead and move forward with this. Kind of what the schedule would look like is, May 4th would be the top, will kind of where we do the resolution. We have a call scheduled tomorrow to work on, work with Standard and Coors on giving a bond rating for these potential bonds. Piper Jeffrey has a lot to do as far as looking into all of the factors that go into issuing these bonds, all the costs. We would be hoping to issue bonds by May 18th. They have said we could do it possibly as early as May 13th, I believe. But it would just kind of depend on how quickly we can move forward with some of these items.
See, see on here on your previous slide, they got it from their A-plus rating?
Correct. We went through, last year, we had kind of a revisit, so to speak, by Standard and Coors. We, the district had to answer some questions and kind of give a financial update, see where we were at on things, and they maintained our A-plus rating. We don't have any reason to assume anything different that we would be at a rating on potential bond offering. Any other questions?
Why do you talk about we want it to be at least 600,000 or else we won't do it? Why don't we go higher and say, I mean, you're at 700, almost 740 there. Why give it such a wide opportunity?
Just based on the interest rates. If we went to refinance these bonds last week, we would have saved 700 and almost 750,000, 740,000. We had to set a threshold at some point and we chose 600. We could have made that a different number. Just given the changes in the market and not knowing from day to day what they might be, if they go back and refine that market's changed enough that we can only say 590,000, then the authorization that you would pass tonight would not allow us to move forward without further investigation and further approval by you.
Do they see it dropping that, that much at that point in time?
I think they can. And this probably would be much, much more help, but just given, one of the things that we looked at was, as you get closer and closer to the call dates, the, what we're looking at refinancing is our 2000, a portion of our 2008 and 2009 bonds. And they're callable in 2018 and 2019. As you get closer to those call dates, with the interest rates that have been in effect, the longer we waited, the closer we came to those call dates, the more interest we could save. But with interest rates starting to rise a little bit, that amount of money that we can save is starting to dwindle a little bit. One of the scenarios was that we could do nothing. And as we get closer to 2018 and 19, we could refinance and potentially save a little bit more. But I think, if I remember correctly, the number was less than one base, less than 1% change in interest rate, and it was $50,000 was the difference. So doing it now and ensuring that we would have at least 750 or 600,000 in savings seemed to make sense considering the times that we're in. And especially, you know, we looked at scenarios that we wouldn't save any money until the call dates, but we felt that saving the money now made sense over the next few years.
It just seemed like such a gap, a large gap.
Well, I'm just telling you, I think there was maybe two or three weeks, I think, in between the first scenario they gave us and then this scenario. And the decrease was about $40,000, that's not about right. So in just a few weeks, we lost a, we lost the potential for $40,000, I should say. And so that's just one, we wanted to make sure that if there was another drop, that we would still see significant savings without having to wait for another board meeting, have to pass another resolution, and then we, you know, lost an opportunity for a few more weeks over time.
So when we pass this tonight, then you'll do this first thing tomorrow?
Yep, we start on it tomorrow and the process begins. And as long as the savings that they can bring to the table and we will realize at least 600,000 in savings, then that resolution would give us the authority to move forward and actually start the process to issue those bonds should we actually get savings of at least 600,000.
Okay.
That was a great question. I'm glad you explained that, KJ. Appreciate it. Any other questions? I'm sure you would appreciate a motion to adopt the bond resolution as presented.
I would, yes.
Second by Alex, second by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor, signature bar is in the key. What this group is in, in a mood to approve tonight?
Just an announcement here. We've got potential saving here, 46 to 750,000 dollars over the, over the next five years or so. If it, let me take you back to 2008, when we passed the bond for the new high school and early childhood center. We told you at that time that the principal and interest, 37% of the principal and interest would be paid for by the state. That's how we advertised the bond. In reality, due to change, almost 45% of the principal and interest of that bond is now being paid for by the state. So an additional 8% of that bond is being paid for by the state. So I think we kept our promise to the taxpayer. And here, we're trying to look at ways of saving the taxpayer money, even over a five or seven year period. And I think that's good use of district funds and tax dollars.
One thing I would just add is that, let's say we're, we are considering refinancing less than 10 million dollars in, in bonds. But we can actually refinance up to 10 million dollars every single year and have it be favorable in the bond market. So this is something that we will continue to look at. And if it makes sense next year to refinance more of them, we will, or the next year after that. So there are more opportunities than just this one.
Great. Well, thank you, KJ. I'm going to switch gears away from finance and talk about our district crisis plan update. So Renee Scott, you're back on. I'm the UNR.
Thanks for having us tonight. We're a little delayed in giving you this information, but we're finally pleased and actually very prideful to be, to be able to present this. I want to give a little bit of history about the rationale behind asking you to adopt a change to our crisis management plan. In the past, our crisis management plan was if there was an incident in or out of school, we made a voice announcement and our schools went into a complete lockdown mode. This was lock the doors, get away from doors and windows and hide essentially until someone rescued you. And that, in most buildings, that policy is an administrator or an officer. So someone who could physically have a key and unlock and rescue you. And that was a great plan at the time. It was the best we had. When Columbine happened, however, the, the law enforcement started to look at those plans because a lot of people who were in the lockdown mode were the most at risk of being killed or injured. And then the same thing similarly happened, the most recent one in terms of large scale was Sandy Hook. So Sergeant Pruitt and Officer Unruh had gone to a training called Alice Training. And Alice Training was a research-based training in which they recommend moving away from lockdown being the only option in a school crisis situation to a couple of other options, run, hide, or fight. And they were so enthusiastic about it and we worked so closely with law enforcement for years on, on following their recommendation, that Dr. Carlin, myself, Martha Darter, and maybe Roy, did he go to that one? We also went to an Alice training that, that was held in Dodge City. And all, almost all Alice trainings are held in conjunction, it's law enforcement and educators. The rationale behind that is we think differently. And it's really good to get a feel for the way they think and react and respond, and then they can also get a feel or rationale for the way we react and respond. Well, a little background about me, I'm, it sounds like Ray.
It is Ray. I just hope it's not me. I'm sorry for the cringe.
I'm personally terrified of weapons, like horrified. And we go into the Alice training and they say, now on day two, wear some comfortable clothes and something that will protect your arms and your head, and we're going to be giving you gear and we're going, we're doing crisis drills with weapons. Well, my heart started beating because I am a principal and I would do anything and everything to save my building. And I would have done, I know I would have done exactly what the Sandy Hook principal did, I have no doubt. But to practice that situation was very scary for me, but we did. And the first scenario was, our only option was to go into lockdown mode. And they busted down the door and all of us were shot. And with a, with an airsoft gun, and it's not, it's not fun to be shot with an airsoft gun. We all had welts and Dr. Carlin was mildly injured in the process. But then the other scenarios came too, where we had some options and we were empowered to make some decisions. And some of those decisions were, it's okay to hide, but do everything you can to barricade the door and make it difficult for an intruder to get in. Or if you have some information about where the intruder is in your building, maybe it's best if you run. And if you've read any of the research on Sandy Hook, some of those teachers who didn't follow the protocol, they took their kids across the street. They, they were saved, obviously. So, and then another option is fight, and that is the, the last option. But most, about a week ago, we read too, where a gunman entered a school, the police were just about ready to shoot the gunman and a teacher intervened and just took the gunman out. The more distractions you can offer, the less likely, the fewer amount of victims. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. So last, right shortly after the Alice training, then Pruitt and Unruh and I went to another training and it wasn't Alice, it was the Department of?
Intruderology.
Intruderology. And the state of Kansas put that on. And again, it was law enforcement, superintendents, principals, and it was almost a recap of the Alice training, maybe a little modified, but the same thing. And so last summer, Dr. Carlin, myself, Officer Weeks and Officer Unruh, we all trained, Mr. Cessna, we all trained all district principals and several central office staff in the methodology. And the buy-in was tremendous. We did that in conjunction with law enforcement. So members of the police department were trained simultaneously with members of the school personnel. And after that, Dr. Carlin charged us with coming up with updating the crisis management plan in accordance with, with these new recommendations from law and public security. And so we have just a draft of this updated plan, if you would, everyone has one. We decided not to do it just electronically because it's a flip chart and it's just awkward to look at. But the only change is on that first page. And it used to only have the lockdown procedures, which are still there because they're still important. And in a lot of cases, probably a large percentage of cases, that's still a very viable option. But we've also offered teachers and school personnel a little autonomy in making other choices based on information they know. So if the best option in a crisis situation is run, we've given some recommendations on how to do that in our crisis plan. If it's to fight, we've given some recommendations as to how to do that. We used to just make one general announcement, every school went into lockdown and they knew nothing else. The new plan's recommend, give your staff as much information as possible, as many ways as possible. You know, I, I just look at the high school right now, but if we said there's an intruder in the freshman academy, that signals to trade and help, you've got some time to get out. That's clear on the other side of the building. And if the lockdown doors have been locked, you have some options. Our building's going to look a little bit different than Gertrude Walker or Garfield or one of the country schools. So each So each plan has to be modified according to what best fits that school and that age group. So you know that's an issue. I'm gonna let the officers jump in because I'm dictating. I'm very wordy about this because I've looked into a lot of it and I have a high interest in it. And so feel free to throw questions at me.
I think what I wanted to talk a little bit about is that we actually introduced this to some members of the community. We came back from our training. We, there were some issues amongst the city, in one of our city buildings, a gentleman had been making threats. And so they wanted their staff to be trained. So all of the administrative assistants in the city and some other employees came through this training. And then they told their friends, some churches contacted us, we've been doing training in the churches. They contacted their friends. And Red Cross contacted us and had us do a training, a workshop for a faith-based organization. We've done, the police department's been trained, we trained a daycare. And Russell Child Development received some training. They didn't get all the training because of logistics, but we've got the word out there. And in each of those, someone has raised their hand and asked, is the school doing this yet? And I've said, well, we're working on it. So they're, they're asking the questions and I'm excited about it because when we did the lockdown, when we would do the lockdown practices, I, when I was at the middle school, I would go into a classroom afterwards and the kids would always ask, what do we do if the bad guy comes in here? And I would say, what would you do? And I would let them tell me. And they had great ideas. And I'm like, you know, I wish that we could find a way to introduce this. And then when the run, hide, fight and Alice Training came along, I thought this is one of the best things that I've seen. And being in the schools, I know that the, the teachers can be empowered and the kids can make decisions too.
Another example of great community partnerships going on here, just kind of just feeds at the bridges program earlier. It's scary to think about, but we have to be responsible and deal with this. It is in today's, or possibilities that we can't discuss this. So I'm glad that we're dealing with it and moving forward and developing a more realistic plan to help, help our students be safe, so. Any other questions? Are there any questions? Awesome. Thank you for your board.
Thanks.
We would like, if possible, a decision to be made on whether or not this could be a part of our crisis plan so then we could move forward with some training options. So I'm not sure when the board would want to move on it, but...
Can we put it on for old business for next meeting? Typically, that gives us some time to think about it, come up with some more questions.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
MPO Weeks has some information you guys might like to review in the meantime.
Okay.
Hey Renee.
Yes.
Been shot by an airsoft gun in Stowers City. Time for a scene. How's it going?
This document here is, it's about a sixty-plus page document called Guide for Developing High-Quality School Emergency Plans, put out by the US Department of Education in conjunction with the FBI. What I've made copies of is the first couple pages, so you can see who crafted it, why. And then just the back five pages that specifically deal with a violent intruder. I'm also gonna hand out a cheat sheet that has the website link in case you want to use the document in its entirety, as well as one that's been written out by the International Association of Chiefs of Police and by Department of Homeland Security. They all endorse in one way or another these type of techniques. The copy that I'm actually handing out to actually uses the verbiage of run, hide, fight, just like we did in the crisis plan. Yes, can you keep that? And if anybody wants the full hard copy, I'm gonna be happy to read it for a little bit of light reading.
I might just echo your comment of the relationship you're able to look at law enforcement, how productive that is for the school this year. Going back to the, the training, they curate the lion's share of the work to put that on. And it was so helpful for our staff to, to understand and to develop those relationships with, with these people that are in our community protecting us and looking out for our interests. It is, it is great to know that we have that kind of a relationship and that means a lot to the safety of our kids. So I want to thank them.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I add something?
Please do.
One thing I want to talk about from a law enforcement standpoint, it kind of breaks my heart because I went to this training and we talked about response times. And they talked to us about average response times for police departments. And in Garden City, we have a pretty quick response time. I like it. But what they drove home is that we're not gonna get there in time, most of the time. And so empowering teachers and administrators and school personnel, I think, is very important. And so it drove it home to us because we, we train a lot in active shooter response as police officers and law enforcement. And it still is probably not gonna be enough with the way society's going. So we have to do something a little bit different than just, this lockdown. So I think it's real important to understand from law enforcement standpoint, having the partnership that we're talking about is extremely important to us because we need, we need all the help we can get, so.
And on the positive side, we've got SROs in the building already, which is a huge advantage and we're very grateful to have. And we also have this partnership so that we're not ignoring the fact that we might not be at the best level that we could possibly be at this point in time, but we're willing to work for it. So I think there's great things coming from what you've learned and we appreciate you sharing your information with us. Like we've said, you know, keeping our kids safe is really ultimately number one on the list, so.
Absolutely.
That's, that's great. And I love the relationship with the community. I can see this for major employers throughout our whole community taking advantage of it. I, Dr. Carlin talked about having a retreat for the board to go through this training program so that we can see what our teachers are being trained on. And then we can take that back to our businesses, which is a huge advantage. So I, I see this as positive all around.
And the one thing about this training is, you know, we, we've taught from the very beginning how to do a fire drill. So if a fire alarm went off right now, we would all know what to do because we learned kindergarten. And by teaching kids this in the school, if something were to happen at Wal-Mart or at Dylan's, they're gonna know how to react, whereas right now, I don't know what they'll do.
We're raising responsible citizens, right? Those are not the big picture, so that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna shift gears back to finance and budget. So Dr. Carlin and KJ are gonna kind of tag team this portion of the meeting.